Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, December 28th, 2021, meeting at the Ashland Zoning Board of Appeals. In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded on Zoom and will be transferred to WACA where it can subsequently be viewed. The Town of Ashland in response to the COVID-19 coronavirus is currently following the guidance from the Ashland Board of Health, Massachusetts Department of Public Health and the CDC regarding the virus and steps communities can take to prevent the spread. In accordance with the governor's order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 20, all public meetings are being conducted remotely. To participate remotely from a computer, please feel free to log onto the Zoom link provided in the agenda online, or you may dial in via telephone number from the number also listed on the agenda. First order of business will be to call the meeting to order and take a roll call. I, John Trefeathen, am present. Brian, you're muted.
Hi, Brian Forrestall, I'm present.
Hi, Nathan Band, present.
Hi, Stuart Siegel, I'm present.
Very good. First order of business tonight is the continued public hearing on the special permit request at 311 Pleasant Street. It's been continued from our December 14th, 2021 meeting. And just for the record, it's to, we're meeting and having a public hearing to hear the petition of NextGrid, P O Box 7775, number 3069, San Francisco, California, zip 94120, requesting a special permit for Chapter 40A, Section 10 of the Massachusetts zoning act and Chapter 282, Sections 3.3, nonconforming uses and structures, and 9.3 special permits of the Ashland bylaws to allow for the construction of a solar canopy structure within the parking area as an extension of the existing nonconforming use on the site. All work shall be within the limits of the existing parking lot and there should be, excuse me, and there should be no proposed changes to the existing building. The property in question is located at 311 Pleasant Street, assesses map 13, Lot 052, and is within the residential B zoning district. And the property is owned by the Ashland Memorial Associates, care of Richard A. Smith, President, 311 Pleasant Street, Ashland, Massachusetts, Sierra 1721. And materials may be viewed at the town hall or on the town website. As I indicated, the hearing opened on December 14th. The applicant's representative, Nathan Collins, presented the request for a special permit. Members of the board had an opportunity to ask questions. The matter was opened for public comment and the board then discussed the matter and asked our Assistant Town Planner, Emma Snellings, to draft a decision consistent with our discussion that evening. And the matter was then continued to, to tonight. Emma did, in fact, send out a draft decision, which hopefully we all had an opportunity to review. As a reminder, sitting on this matter are Brian Forrestall, Stuart Siegel, and myself, John Trefeathen. As I indicated, the, the draft decision was sent out and we reviewed it. Any, any questions or discussions about the, the draft decision? Brian? I'm sorry, yes, Emma?
Oh, if I could just quickly sum up, I did receive some suggestions, so. One suggestion to include the fact that Nathan Band recused himself from the hearing to explain why Stu is sitting on it. And so I've added that statement in to the beginning sections where we described the process of the public hearing. In the, in the facts and evidence section, it states that the applicant presented testimony, the draft stated that the applicant presented testimony stating the need to construct. However, it was pointed out that this is not really a need, and so I've changed that to want to construct. And then a larger question was raised about the vegetative buffers cited twice in the draft decision, so once in finding B and then once in finding E in the fourth bullet point. And so the question was raised whether those vegetative buffers are on the locusts or on a butter properties. And I thought maybe we could ask the applicant to provide some clarity on that matter because if it's not on their property, we probably shouldn't be citing it in the decision.
Well, my other thought on that is that that strikes me as being under the purview of the site plan review that the planning board is going to be conducting. Obviously, if the vegetative buffer is not on the property, we shouldn't, we shouldn't include it, I wouldn't think. But I would also, you know, open for discussion that it's more properly subject to the planning board's site plan review than our special permit, which is sort of limited to whether or not to agree to extend a pre-existing nonconforming use, that would be my thought on that. But perhaps Mr. Collins can, can address the question and then we can perhaps have a further discussion, the board can have a further discussion, how we want to deal with that. Mr. Collins?
Good evening. Again, for the record, Nathan Collins, CLC Design. I represent NextGrid Inc. Regarding the vegetated buffers that were discussed, they are on, or I should say portions of them are on the applicant's property, both on the western, northern, and eastern edges. The property line probably cuts through some of the vegetation, so I can't speak definitively in terms of, you know, numbers of trees or types of trees, but there is vegetation on the applicant's property that provides buffer.
Thank you. I mean, I guess my thought would, my thought would be, and I want to, I'd like to obviously hear from the others, is that we could certainly leave in the reference to vegetative buffering as, as we have done in the decision, but it would be more finely addressed in the site plan review by the planning board, I would think. Brian, thoughts?
Yes, I mainly wanted to make sure that it's not listed as a condition or something that needs to be there in order to see this project through. It seems like, you know, looking at the maps, that there is some vegetation along the property lines. But I don't want the project to be held to having to have vegetation to install it. Because it seems like if the neighbors decide to cut down their trees, there wouldn't be too much vegetation left, just looking at the Google Maps and stuff. I could be way off on that, but I don't think it's necessary to talk about the vegetation. I mean, if you want to talk about it, that's fine, as long as it's not in any way listed as a condition.
Okay, and Stu, your thoughts?
I would agree with, with both of you on this matter. I, I think the Site Planning Board, you know, if, if they come up with it, it sounds like the applicant is willing to provide anything for the, for the vegetation buffer. And if we suggested ourselves, it certainly could be a, a condition. So I would more or less vote with you, Mr. Chairman, on this issue.
Okay, I mean, I think the way, where it's listed, where it's listed in the two different spots in the, in the hearing decision, it's under findings by the board. And I think it's, you know, it's perfectly okay for us to make a finding that there's going to be a vegetative buffer because that's what the, the applicant in its application said there's going to be. It's not a condition, so they don't have to, you know, deal with that through the special permit. I noted that on the planning board's agenda for their, I think it said January 13th meeting, this matter is on for their, for their review. And knowing the planning board, I am sure they are going to be addressing the vegetation and the buffer. So, you know, I, I'm comfortable leaving it the way it is where it's not within a condition and making it a finding as we, as, as we do, I think that's, that's fine. Is everybody in agreement on that?
It's fine with me, then.
Okay.
I concur.
And I have no objections to the two other proposed changes that were called into, to Emma and, or emailed into Emma, however she received them, to note that Nathan had recused himself and that, although that is referenced in our minutes from the December 14th meeting, but also have it in the decision and also eliminating the, the word need because it really isn't a, isn't a need, but it is a desire or a want. The only other thing that I thought I wanted to just point out under the conditions is that I thought that at the hearing last week, Brian had raised a very good question about what happens to the solar panels after the lease is up and if they're no longer being used. And, you know, Mr. Collins provided a, you know, an answer for that, which I thought was perfectly acceptable. But I thought it was, it was important for us to note that, that ultimately it's the responsibility of the property owner to see that they're removed. So that if, for whatever reason, 20 or 25 years from now, things go awry and nobody's around to be able to do it, it ultimately falls upon the, the property owner to, to have them removed. I think it's fairly innocuous, but it does clarify what would happen under a most unlikely situation, but, you know, I don't want to come back in 25 years and find out that they're still up there and nobody, nobody wants to take them down and they're not being used. That would not make me happy when I'm 98 years old. And we all set on that, I'm sorry about that. Okay. I thought the findings on the special permit criteria that Emma noted were perfectly good. They meet all the criteria. Much of it was provided by the applicant in its memorandum accompanying the application. It seems to me that the decision is, is in good shape and I, for one, would be prepared to approve it and, and sign it. Brian, your thoughts?
I'm with you on that.
Okay, and Stu, how about you?
I concur.
Okay. So I think, Emma, we're going to need a, a motion to approve the special permit request and adopt the hearing decision?
But if you can close the public hearing.
Hearing first, yeah, I never get those correct, okay. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Hi, John Trefeathen, vote in favor of closing the public hearing.
Hi, Brian Forrestall, vote in favor of closing the public hearing.
Hi, Stuart Siegel, vote in favor of closing the public hearing.
And Emma, is it now appropriate for a motion to, okay, thank you. I'm always in too much of a hurry. Okay, is there a motion to approve the special permit and adopt the draft hearing decision as amended?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I second that motion.
Aye, John Trefeathen, vote in favor of granting the special permit and adopting the draft decision as amended.
Hi, Brian Forrestall, approve the motion.
Hi, Stuart Siegel, also approve the motion.
Very good. There is a question that Emma had raised about signing. Normally, three of us sign the decision. I know, Stu, are you still traveling?
Yes, I'm in Washington DC now. And I don't expect to be back until after the first of the year.
Okay. Well, I wonder then whether it would be appropriate for their motion to have either just one or two of us sign the hearing decision so that it can be, you know, filed with the town clerk this week and is it appropriate to have two people sign it? Brian, would you be available to sign it this week before town hall closes?
Yeah, I'm available, if you want to do it that way, that's fine.
Or do you want to do just one? I mean, I'm, I'm around because I have.
Yeah, I don't mind if just John does it, probably looks better on paper if just the chair does it.
Okay. Then I will need a motion to allow John Trefeathen to sign on behalf of the, of the board. Is that the motion that we need, Emma?
So moved.
And Stu?
And I second that motion.
Okay, and aye, John Trefeathen, vote in favor.
Hi, Brian Forrestall, vote in favor.
Hi, Stuart Siegel, vote in favor.
Very good, okay. Mr. Collins, the decision will be signed this week and filed with the town clerk this week. This is a 20-day waiting period for the special permit to see if anybody appeals it. If not, then the special permit will be suitable for being filed with the Registry of Deeds at that time.
Well, thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you, sir, and good luck. Good luck with the planning board.
Thanks, happy new year to everyone.
Happy new year to you as well. Okay, next item on the agenda is the minutes from our December 14th, 2021 meeting. Once again, Emma sent those out to us for review. Any questions or proposed changes? Emma, did you hear from anyone with any proposed changes?
I did not.
Any questions, anyone? If not, is there a motion to approve the minutes of the December 14th, 2021, meeting as presented?
I had one question.
Whoops, yes, yes, Nathan, I'm sorry.
Lines 47 to 51, talking about the vote to continue the hearing. Emma, can you just confirm that that's actually how it played out? Because I think I had skipped that vote.
Nope, yep, great catch. Yeah, that should be Trefeathen, Forrestall, Siegel, and I will change it to reflect that.
Right, other than that, I've got no issue.
Okay, thank you for catching that, Nathan, that was, that was a good one. Okay. Well, then, is there a motion to approve the minutes with that amendment?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I second that motion.
Aye, John Trefeathen, vote in favor.
Aye, Brian Forrestall, vote in favor.
Aye, Nathan Band, vote in favor.
Aye, Stuart Siegel, vote in favor.
Very good, and moving on to item number four on the agenda, staff updates and administrative matters. Emma, any updates or administrative matters? I know you did send out this afternoon the schedule for our 2022 meetings, and thank you very much for that. Any other staff updates or administrative matters before?
Only that there will be a new case on for the first meeting in January. And if anyone sees any, you know, holidays or conflicts on the schedule I sent out, you know, just let me know, we can move things around.
Okay, very good. This falls under the category of, I guess, staff updates and administrative matters. I received from Susan Robey, the Administrative Assistant to the Select Board, a Talent Bank form that had been submitted by an Ashland resident who had expressed an interest in possibly joining the Zoning Board of Appeals. And he, I believe, is attending the meeting tonight if the initials S W stand for Sunday Wiley. Mr. Wiley, are you there? You're muted, so I'm not sure whether you're there or not. Going, hello?
Hi, can you hear me?
I am sorry, I apologize. I've been addressing you as mister and that does not sound like a mister's voice. We can hear you, yes. Can you hear us? Hello?
Can you hear me?
We, I can, I can hear you now.
Okay, I'm so sorry, I'm having technical difficulties, but I'm here.
Okay, very, very good. Well, thank you for your, for your interest in the, in possibly joining the Zoning Board of Appeals. I noticed you were, had signed on and had hopefully heard the conclusion of the public hearing that, that we had for the special permit. Any? Why don't you tell us a little bit about yourself? I know I saw, had an opportunity to see the Talent Bank form. I don't recall whether I had forwarded this to everybody else back in mid, mid-December. I know I did for, for one person who had expressed an interest, but I, I may not have done it for Ms. Wiley. Ms. Wiley, why don't you tell the board a little bit about, about your background?
Okay, my name is Sunday Wiley and I moved here right before COVID from Washington DC. I work at a company called The Mathworks and I work in infrastructure, architecture, and tooling. I'm a software developer. Before that, I worked for DHS and before that, I worked for NGA. And before that, I was abroad. I'm primarily interested in infrastructural projects. I did apply to multiple opportunities to volunteer for Ashland. I just moved here. I'm, I purchased a condominium near Ashland State Park. I believe in your neighborhood, John.
Yes, you're, I think, a couple of drives away from me, actually.
Sure, sure, it's a lovely neighborhood. So I recently moved in, I moved in in November, mid-November. And yeah, I'm just, this board was available. They had an opportunity and I wanted to get involved if possible, so.
Okay, well, Brian or Stu or Nathan, any, any questions from Ms. Wiley?
Nothing from me, hope you join us.
Cheers, cheers.
Well, I was going to say, having listened a little bit to what we, to what we do tonight, this is something that you think you'd like to, you'd like to do?
Yeah, it looks interesting. I'd like to sit in on the January 11th meeting if possible. And I, you know, I feel like today it was kind of in the middle of things. I came in in the middle of things, looking at what you were resolving. The special permit, yeah, so I'd love to see the start of the new year, what's, what's slated.
Okay, well, we do have, our next meeting is Tuesday, January 11th. We do have a special permit application, which will be starting the public hearing right from, from the beginning. So you'd be able to, you'd be able to observe that. All of our meetings are open to the public so that at any time, anyone can join the Zoom meeting as Mr. Dissoni is doing tonight. He is a regular observer of us. Nice to see you, Mr. Dissoni, happy new year. And the Zoning Board of Appeals is made up of three members, we're a three-member board, and we have four associate members, or we're up to four associate members. At the moment, we only have one associate member, so there are three openings for associate members. And we would, we would welcome your, your joining us, I believe. How the process typically works is that the Select Board would like someone like yourself to observe one or two meetings just to get a sense of, you know, what's involved and see if you think it would be a good fit for you, something that you would like to do. And then the existing board would vote to send a letter to the Select Board, either supporting or not supporting your decision. In all the years I've been on the board, I don't recall there ever being an email or letter sent to the Select Board not recommending somebody who was interested in joining us. So I don't think that's much of a possibility. And then typically, the Select Board asks for the member to, for the, the applicant, as it were, to appear before them to answer any questions they might have and before voting to appoint you. We are appointed by the Select Board. Associate members are appointed to one-year terms beginning, I think, is it September 1st or August 1st? I think it's September 1st, isn't it? Yeah, September 1st. So you're welcome to join us on, on January 11th. I will make sure, I will give Emma your email address so that she can forward to you the agenda and I think the application as well, whatever is public filings for the project in advance, so you can review it and see a little bit of, you know, the type of material that we're, we're given before, before a public hearing. And hopefully after that, you'll say, yes, please, please tell the Select Board that I'd like to join the ZBA.
Okay, good deal.
Excellent. Any, any other questions you might have?
No, not at this time. I probably will have a lot of questions and you'll regret giving me that opening in the future.
Well, we'll keep that in mind.
Good deal.
Now, questions?
I ask a lot of questions.
Questions are good, questions are good. Okay, well, if there is nothing else then on our staff updates and administrative matters, and Emma is shaking her head no, then I think I've heard hearing someone make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
And is there a second? Okay, aye, John Trefeather, vote in favor.
Aye, Brian Forrestall, vote in favor.
Hi, Nathan Band, vote in favor.
Hi, Stuart Siegel, vote in favor.
Thank you, we are adjourned. Happy New Year to everybody, and stay safe.